After day, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Monday, November 15th. The time is nine o'clock a.m. Notices for this confirmation hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, November 5th, and again on Friday, November 12th, 2021. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on the same days. Zoom meeting is hosted by the legislature's A.V. staff and my committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please begin by stating your names for the record-keeping purposes. We have one agenda item this morning. That is the reappointment of Sharon Jo Davis to serve as a member, the general public representative to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees for a term length of six years from October 27, 2021 to October 26, 2027. I'd like to recognize and thank my colleagues for joining us this morning, beginning with Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Taitwee, Sito Spasi, colleagues. I would just like to briefly read the duties of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees. The board, according to 80105.1, that's Title 10 Guam Code annotated, "The board shall be liable for the negligence act of any hospital employee or officer if the board knew or had noticed that said employee or officer was inefficient and incompetent to perform the services for which he was hired, or said board retained such inefficient or incompetent person after knowledge or notice of such inefficiency or incompetency. No trustee shall be liable for any decision made in good faith, a non-malicious fulfillment of his duties. The board shall be liable as fiduciaries in the execution of their duties. No trustee shall be actively engaged in the selling of services or goods to the hospital without the express approval of the Board of Trustees. The form of approval shall be by the adoption of board resolution confirming said approval. This restriction shall not apply to healthcare professionals who provide direct patient care services to the hospital. No trustee shall act when a conflict of interest occurs. The trustee shall disclose the nature of the conflict to the members present and abstain from any discussion or voting on the issue until it has been disposed of by action of the remaining members present." And then talks about failure to disclose a conflict. All right, now I know the board is very busy with management and, of course, policy setting for the hospital, and especially in times of COVID, it's been extremely busy, and that they have very, very active subcommittees that each of the board members are appointed to. So in addition to their regular board meetings, they are very, very busy with subcommittee work. And so this is a great sacrifice and, you know, obligation on those who take on this position. So I want to thank Ms. Davis. This is a recurring nominee appointment, and I want to thank you for your service to the hospital, to the people of Guam, and your willingness to accept this appointment going forward. Right here now from those who signed up for testimony this morning, beginning with our administrator of the Guam Memorial Hospital, Ms. Lillian Posadas. Ms. Posadas?
Morning, yes, my name is Lillian Posadas, and I am the hospital administrator. And thank you, Speaker, Theresa Lai, for giving me this opportunity, and those of us who are here to then testify in support of trustee Sharon Davis. Thank you, Senators Tony Ada, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo, also for this opportunity and for giving me the, listening to my testimony in support of trustee Sharon. Trustee Sharon Davis has been very active, very engaged. She is the chairperson for the Subcommittee on Facilities, Capital Improvement, and IT Infrastructure. So she's been very diligent in meeting with us regularly. I don't think there's ever been a time where we haven't met because no forum or, you know, she was absent. She was always present in, not just at the subcommittee meetings, but also at the full board meetings, and asked many great questions. They're not negative questions, but they're just kind of clarification and inquisitive for better understanding. So that way, when she makes a, takes the time to vote on an issue, there she is more, she's well-informed and clear with whatever questions and with whatever issues that she has. So we're very, very pleased and very fortunate to have trusted Sharon Davis as a board member. And really very, very caring and, you know, just really, again, interactive with our, with our executive team and with our employees. And she comes and makes rounds. She makes herself visible to the employees. And so we are just very, very pleased. I'd also like to read Mr. William Kando. He's our associate administrator of operations. He's not able to join us this meeting. He got called to meet with another group of people regarding another matter. So if I may, Madam Speaker, speak and read Mr. William Kando's testimony. Good morning, Speaker Lai, Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature and the Guam community. I am William Kando, Associate Administrator of Operations of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I am providing testimony today in favor of confirming Ms. Sharon Davis to continue serving in her capacity as one of GMH's esteemed Board of Trustees. Since serving as a board member back in July 2015, trustee Davis has both professionally and consistently served as the chairwoman of GMH's BOT Subcommittee on Facilities, Capital Improvement Projects, and Information Technology, a role well-suited for her and GMH, given the leadership position that she performs in the private sector for GTA Tele Guam LLC as their vice president of the customer experience. Throughout her tenure, she has served in this capacity, demonstrating outstanding motivational leadership, savvy and strategic guidance, and decision-making. She's been a well of positive and fun energy that I cannot foresee ever running dry. And she's always been available and ready to meet and lead the subcommittee on a regular basis. During her tenure, GMH has successfully completed a long list of capital projects that were absolutely critical to sustaining GMH's operations and thereby enabling the organization to meet its mission to provide quality patient care in a safe environment. I apologize to Ms. Davis if my words fall short on describing all of her wonderful qualities and traits. What I can say without any doubt or reservation is that Ms. Davis should be confirmed today by this legislative body so that she can continue in her capacity to serve the Guam community as one of GMH's Board of Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony, testimony in support of Ms. Davis's confirmation to the GMH Board of Trustees. Signed, Mr. William Kando. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Administrator Posadas and Mr. Kando. I know he is in charge of the facilities and has been very active in that. So his testimony is very welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, if you would like to present testimony, you are welcome to do so.
I didn't prepare anything, Speaker Theresa. Just because, you know, after six years, I mean, basically, in fact, I was going to invite my family because quite frankly, they're the reason that I do this community service. And so I just hope to continue serving this community and staying on on the, my subcommittee. It's funny, when I first joined the board, I will say that there, I didn't know that each member would serve separately on kind of the head of a subcommittee. And so here I was, in fact, with Lil at this meeting, and, you know, there's a lot of medical staff on our board, obviously. And I was like, I wouldn't fit into that one. I wouldn't fit into that one. And when we got to the facilities one, I was like, quite frankly, nobody else wanted it. And so I was the last one. And so I was like, okay, I'll, I'll take that one. And, you know, William and each, that team trained me up. I mean, for someone from the private sector to join a board, I mean, more specifically, the hospital, I had to learn the medical acumen as well as the Guam procurement law. Because, you know, I'd be like, why don't we just buy, you know, we need this piece of thing. Why don't we just, you know, use a corporate credit card and go out and buy it and problem solved? And, you know, quite frankly, obviously, that's not the way it works. And so, you know, I just will say that it's just, it's a pleasure to serve. And I feel as though my family is better for it. I'm better for it. When I hear folks talk about government of Guam in a negative tone, I wish that there were more folks participating on boards that they can kind of understand all of the intricacies of how the government works and the services that need to be provided to the community. So it's been a pleasure. I think I'm the only board member that gets a six-year term. I'm not sure if that's a punishment or a... I'm kidding. That's it for me, Speaker. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for your years of service and dedication to this board and for service on this particular committee. I know that so in the last six years, for sure, the facilities have been under focus, and it's been quite tumultuous, even, you know, politics, of course. Lots of, but enough because we were having a hard time funding capital improvements that were necessary. So we're very hopeful, you know, coming. We've seen the improvements that were made during COVID by necessity and that have been made over the last couple of years, and I'm very pleased with those. And I'm hoping to see more. And of course, that will allow our hospital to continue to provide ultimate, you know, services for the people of Guam, pending, of course, the building of a new hospital. So I know that that's very important. And we've talked about certain projects for a number of years. And I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions about some of those. And because you work in the private sector, and I guess I just want to make sure if anything has changed, if you have any conflicts, do you think you had any conflicts while serving on the, on the board?
In fact, we've reduced services from GTA while I've been on the board at the hospital. So no, 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 no conflicts. I mean, I think your Guam law prevents that from happening anyway. You know, the, that's definitely a help, yeah. But I think I have had to recuse myself once on a decision with a, one of the current vendors. I can't remember in particular what it was. But we do also do a good job of going through ethics training every year. And so I think that really keeps it top of mind for us that, you know, when in doubt, just recuse or, you know, state the obvious that there is a conflict.
Great, that's good to hear. I guess so the couple of projects I wanted to ask about. The GMH-wide HVAC system upgrade is estimated to cost $6 million and will be funded by Department of Interior CIP funds and CARES Act funds. Just wanted to know if you are aware of the estimated timeline for this to be replaced?
Not off the top of my head, but I, I was just re-looking at, you know, the, the last, one thing that we've, I think that we've been successful on, Lil, is really bringing information to the legislature to, for you guys to make decisions. And I think one of the things that we've done successfully is put together these little packets and that have, this one specifically was created for the last legislative hearing. It's called Legislative Informational Briefing, Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. And so I would, I would say that the details are in there, but as far as timelines, I'll give you an example, especially right now with COVID. You know, we looked forward to the H.R. system, and we set some really tight deadlines with getting that system up and running. And we have missed those deadlines due to COVID, either, you know, on the vendor side, on, on our side, you know, kind of getting folks trained up so that they understand testing. And so although I will say that we do a very good job of when there is a delay, that those get published in the, the board meeting. And so in addition to the, that packet that you guys get, we also have a project manager that is watching these projects and also putting them into a, a system. So we've actually, I forget, is it Smart Sheet that we're using?
Yeah, Smart Sheet.
At any time, you can go in and see what's impacting a project, timelines, and that, that kind of thing. And so I'm sorry, I can't answer your, your question specifically on that.
All right. The, well, the reason I'm asking timelines is because I think, um, yeah, we've been brief very well on the projects that are kind of priority. And so those are very clear. But sometimes, yes, the timelines change, or I've seen them change in my tenure here. And so that's why I'm always curious. What's, what's the newest timeframe that we're looking at? The next one I was going to ask you about is the roofs, for example, right? So we thought those were going to be done. I know you had them slated to be done, and then there, there are delays, and then COVID. And yeah, so I guess I'd just like to ask, if you could just maybe, for the public, yeah, explain to them, what is the plan for the roof? When do you expect these improvements to be made? Because that was one of the improvements that was highly recommended by the Army Corps.
Yeah, well, it's super visible because if you walk through the hospital, you can see all of the leaky portions. I, again, I apologize. I don't know the specifics, I mean, of when the roof is going to be completed. Right now, I believe what we're doing is we're completing the demolition of the Z-Wing. And after that's completed, I believe that there's like preliminary stuff going on in, in design. I mean, these are the things, unfortunately, that I wish we could go faster in, but doesn't really happen that way.
All right, well, in the, one of the minutes of the board, they said the notice, they issued a notice to proceed and dated 9/26/2021, and that the project would be done in phases. And I just get, wanted to get the public an idea of what they would be able to see in these phases and when. But, all right, so they're doing the demolition right now as we speak? Is that what you're saying?
Of the Z-Wing, that's that front portion of the hospital, yeah. And I believe the way that the roof is going to be completed is it's going to be done in phases. I mean, obviously, we can't shut the whole hospital down to do a one-time roof fix. So, and, you know, there's, of course, like, air conditioning needs to be considered, electrical needs to be considered, water needs to be considered. And again, I mean, I hate to say this, but someone trying to build a house right now is going to have a very hard time. Something that used to get done in 30 days is probably going to take a year as well as costs. And as I understand it, if we go above a certain amount, like something costs, it needs to go over to the, goodness, I forget the name, the, what's the legal office for the government called?
Oh, the Attorney General.
Attorney General. Has to go, the Attorney General is get reviewed. But you're right, I should have known about the roof.
But are you satisfied? Maybe I'll just ask you in general then, are you satisfied? So the hospital did not make a direct request to the legislature for CIP projects last year or this year? And the hospital made a request for a budget that was, uh, I think a reduced amount this year as well, anticipating some federal funds and, and also ARP funds, but some other federal funds as well. And they've used federal funds for some of these capital improvements. And in fact, I think, for example, the, the HVAC, yeah, DOI funds and, and that type of thing. Are you satisfied with the funding that it's going to be, that you are proceeding with these capital improvement projects, especially those that were deemed critical by the Army Corps for the current patient care that we're going to need for the next five years? Are you satisfied that those are proceeding as they should be to, to protect the patients?
Ah, goodness, satisfied. I wish that things moved faster, quite frankly, I really do. And forgive me, my understanding is that our, that typically, capital improvement projects aren't approved by the legislature. And so this is where, maybe I'm misinformed. I guess I'm under the impression that we bring to you, like, we want to fix the roof, and then it doesn't get funded, and then we're looking for alternate ways to, to, to fund things. And so maybe I'm misunderstanding the way that it works.
Yeah, well, but the way I've seen it work in my tenure is that, I'm saying in the last two years, GMH has not requested for capital improvement funds from the legislature, meaning they have decided they would find it on their own, other sources. And so the pace, if it's dependent on funding, is, you know, determined by the board or by your funding, however you're finding that. And I'm just noting that there had been, there had been no direct request to the legislature. So of course, to me, when we look at the roof and, for example, right, and if we think that's urgent, and there's no request to fund that, then, then we're hoping that you have sufficient funding and that you're satisfied with the funding that you're finding and that it's, it's moved, that those funding sources are going to allow you to move these projects fast enough. That, you know, I'm gathering this because otherwise it's kind of unexplained, you know?
I guess I was under the impression that it's included in our, our whole budget request. Is that not true, Lil?
Not true, it's not true. They have a list of projects that they need. They have costs assigned to them, but they've made a very deliberate request that excludes any funding for CIP projects. This is one thing that I wasn't sure whether the board members understand is this budget request. It's like, there's a lot of, as you said, criticism in, in the public as to, you know, what we've done for the hospital and all of this. But there's also, yeah, you know, we are, we are also limited by budget requests and what, what is requested. And also, you know, for example, when we tried to give an additional $10 million for particular CIP, non-requested CIP funds, that, that also was not honored by, by the executive branch. And so, yeah, I just want, as board members, for you all to be a little bit aware of these types of things that if you think the projects are moving slow, then I would, I would ask that you dig deeper and find out, you know, are we really, really limited to this particular source of funds? Or are we've decided to limit ourselves to those particular source of funds, right? Or, or just?
That seems crazy to me as someone who sits on that. Is there a form we need to fill out or something for? Maybe I need to see a, an example of what like a, a direct funding packet looks like and so that we can provide that to you that makes sense.
Yes, well, yeah, I would, I would recommend then that you, I'm, I'm happy to talk to you more about this, but I'd ask that you and board members really get a briefing. You get a briefing on kind of what your needs are, what you're going to be spending on next. But I think just the overall plan as to how you're going to, to proceed and what, what your, you know, why the timelines are the way they are. So there's several projects I wanted to ask you about. And if the details aren't in front of you, you know, I'm not going to ask all the details, but it's the timelines for things that we've been talking about for years. The HVAC system, the roof, timeline for the EHR. I know we got an update the last time we had an, you know, oversight of the hospital, and I want to thank you for the updates. But I just want, at every hearing I have, I, I'd like to ask updates on these things. These things were deemed to us to be critical, emergency. They were so critical. And, and then the timelines on them are very confusing, right? And so the demolition, I know that that's an important project, but I am, I guess this is the first I'm hearing that that was prioritized though over some of the other things. But what about, what about, so lately, they've been having issues about, well, I was very glad that they, the hospital has been able to take care of its, its nurses voting to extend this differential pay, right? And you, you've done the same for, it looks like 25% working differential pay to employees certified or licensed in rehabilitation, radiology, dietary, and special services. That was recent. And then they had done the differential pay for nurses, respiratory therapists, and lab workers. And the news outlined the cost of these. I guess they got these from your Board of Trustees meetings, which I appreciate the openness in the Board of Trustees meetings. And I understand this is all to sustain current staff, be competitive, right, to recruit and retain personnel. And we've talked about this again for years. So I'm glad about those. There's been some talk in the media about additional hiring of positions that, that above step, you know, higher salaries, and not clear whether those are, are necessarily critical, like the ones we just described, right? And if, I guess what I'm, I'm, the way it works in my mind is, is if you have critical needs for employees and you have a limited pot of money for it, then of course, we would like to see the pot dedicated for those critical needs. And so when the pot is being increased somewhere else, some other positions may be less critical. I just want to be assured that that's not going to deter you from filling these critical positions, right? Do you understand? So I don't know, how do you feel about those? I guess one of the positions that talked about in the media was like a P.I.O. recruited above step or, or above salary. And I've just one, I'm not familiar with, familiar with all the positions, but I just want, what is your assurance? Or what, what is your take on, you know, filling the needs of these critical positions? And do you feel like the board has been able to do that?
I do, well, first of all, just say that I'm also very critical of hires. And the question that I ask, because my, you know, my role is to represent the community, right? I'm not a, like, as I said, I'm not a medical staff member there. And so, you know, often I'm thinking about what would I do in my own capacity and my role? And, and so, well, first I'll say that I was a, so the question I ask is, what, what would happen if we didn't do it? And, and so a lot of times, the questions get answered at that point, right? And I'm not familiar around the P.I.O. position, but I will say that I was an advocate for hiring a P.I.O. for the hospital. I, I think that the hospital for years was just on playing defense, if you will, rather than talking more about what we were doing in the community, you know, what we were doing to, to save lives and the small steps that they were doing to serve the community. And I, I felt that it was really important that our community felt that it wasn't just bad news coming out of the hospital all the time, that if they were going to take their mother to our hospital, that they would hear about also, you know, the many positive stories. I mean, as you know, folks love to go negative with things. So, yeah, I'll say in my capacity, I'm critical of even increases. I'm critical of those. And I understand my role as a, you know, just a general community member in asking those questions. Sometimes it's very uncomfortable, but I don't care. I don't care. I don't feel like that, I mean, my responsibility to this community is to, and that's what I signed up for.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. And I share that sentiment with you. So do you feel like as a board member and as a board that you are able to prioritize the critical positions?
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, goodness, if we had a doctor, I mean, if we had 20 more doctors to hire, we certainly would. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough balance, it's a tough balance. In fact, as I was chatting with your staff about pre-hearing is that, I mean, one of the blessings of COVID is the light that it put on the hospital to get projects funded, to get, you know, the salaries looked at, to get. And, and so, you know, COVID's been a really terrible thing, but I feel like it's also been a blessing to get, especially for someone who sat on the board pre-pandemic.
I appreciate that, I, I agree that it, COVID has shown us a kind of, we've all had to shift.
Our ability that we had in our community. And I'm just so happy that we're thinking now about, I don't think we would have gotten this new hospital through had it not been for the pandemic, so.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Davis. I'm going to open it up for the other senators right now. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. Good morning, Ms. Davis, and thank you for taking the governor's, accepting the governor's appointment to, reappointment to the Board of Trustees of the hospital. And I think it's very important to know that, you know, that the, you represent the general public, and that's great, you know, getting the input from the constituents of the island. And perhaps that would lead me to, maybe I just probably have a couple of questions. And, and I'm glad you brought up the new hospital. Do you think that the, the location of the hospital that's being spoke about at Eagles Field is the most practical place? And, you know, why or why not? And do you think that Oka Point may be a better place to have our, our new hospital built? And do you think that Oka Point may be a better place to have our, our new hospital built?
Uh, okay, 100% transparent. I didn't really care too much about where it was going to be located. I cared more about the accessibility to the community. And so I like that it's in that area. I, I think it's going to be easier for our friends from the South to come up as well as, you know, it's, it's kind of centrally located. Uh, I don't, one of the jokes I make Senator at the board meetings is that if we leased the property that we're currently at and use that to fund the new hospital, I think that, uh, we'd be in great spot, especially with the price of, uh, real estate now. So I've never let, I mean, I think it's a beautiful location where it's at right now, but I don't think it's practical for what our community really needs.
I see. Okay. That, that's, you know, I, I'm, I'm appreciative for your candor there. The, um, I know that they were talking about the land, uh, being returned from the Navy to, for the hospital to be built in that area. But I'm not sure if they were planning to do any environmental assessments on that prior to it being, uh, turned over. Would you be able to, or would you as the representative for the general public, fight to ensure that, you know, there are no contaminants on that piece of parcel prior to it being returned? And prior to even, uh, hospital to be thought to being built there?
I, I think that we should do our, I mean, you said the word fight, uh, the stuff, Senator, I, I, I mean, I'll just apologize. The stuff I fight for is just capital improvement projects. And, you know, in that, I know I had been asked to join a couple of meetings on the new hospital, but I haven't, uh, been to any meetings and I, I'm not really in the know, I guess, on all of that. That part of it, the new hospital. We're still trying to get the roof fixed and the Z wing demolished. And, you know, as Speaker said, the HVAC system upgraded and new equipment. So I apologize. I'm, I'm not too in the know on what's happening with the new hospital just yet.
Okay. So, um, were you in the, involved or in the know on the facilities condition assessment of the hospital that was conducted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers?
I am.
You were? Uh, so they perhaps probably gave you guys like an exit brief on the cost bill and things like that? So you're not the, the public caring for, for the build for the new hospital? You know, I asked the question if, uh, the cost of the hospital at $743 million was, uh, based on, uh, a typical DOD type military construction? And I was told that it wasn't, but on the exit survey or the, on the, uh, assessment, uh, the assessment report, it does say that this cost is developed on the basis of a typical DOD type military cost estimate using the parametric area cost estimating software system. Do you think at $743 million that it's a little bit over what we would like to spend for a civilian hospital versus a military type hospital?
I think that COVID changed everything on construction. So, I, I mean, if that was true on DOD versus, I, I, I mean, are you talking about like a private hospital versus a department of, I was born in a military hospital, Senator. My father was, uh, military. So, uh, I guess I'm not really understanding the question. I'm fine with a DOD hospital. I've also, uh, seen a private hospital. Um, my father recently had surgery. My mother recently had hip replacement surgery. And I can appreciate the changes that have made in, been made in design for healthcare in that now they're thinking of healing the whole family versus the single patient. And so, uh, I, I think your, your question is more about the particulars of the cash that it's going to cost to, to build a hospital. I assure you that the Guam law forces all of that to be pretty transparent on what people are bidding for, how much things cost. And so I apologize if I'm not answering your question more specifically on what you're trying to get at here. But, uh, again, as a representative of the community on this GMH board, I hope that our aim is to build a hospital that can provide, uh, quality patient care in a safe environment.
Well, definitely. And I, I think that's what's important to, um, you know, like, like myself, I'm a military veteran. So, you know, I had children born both military and civilian hospitals. And I think the, when we, when I talk about a military type construction hospital, you know, uh, the hospital that my son was born in in the States, and I absolutely had bulletproof windows and things like that because of the, the nature of the thing of military hospital. And does a civilian hospital need that type of infrastructure, right? Uh, I mean, what it costs to, to build a civilian hospital versus a military hospital is, they're, they're two totally different type of, uh, needs. And I think that whatever money that we can save building a new civilian hospital would be able to, uh, perhaps put in additional, uh, staffing for, you know, or offer more clinical type, uh, services, right? So, uh, yeah, I, I, I think that, uh, it's just, and I just wanted to get your feel for, you know, uh, both the, the location and the cost construction being that, you know, you're the representative for the public. And, you know, to, so that you can voice the public's interests, uh, most especially. Uh, but other than that, I don't have, uh, any other additional questions. Thank you again for accepting the governor's call and, you know, uh, six years. Wow. Yeah, at least you get, you can plan out your, your next six years of your life for the hospital. And looking forward to the new construction. But thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you too, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly thank you also to Ms. Davis for, um, signing up to continue her work with the GMH board. I just wanted to follow up on one of the questions that you raised, Madam Speaker, with regards to, um, physicians at the hospital, because of course, we all want to make sure that the areas, uh, that are most needed, particularly with regards to direct medical expertise are really where the focus is, because it's hard for me to listen to requests for continued increased funding to the hospital. When in practice, um, we don't see that same priority put into those critical positions. And then positions that we would look at perhaps is not as critical are funded. And then, you know, we have requests for above step increase in salaries. Um, and I know for our, our hospital administrator, when Ms. Passadas actually was there as a full-time employee at GMH, she actually did most of the speaking during that time with regards to updating the public on issues affecting the hospital, particularly with regards to patients or someone was in a car accident or whatever the case may be. She was quite able to articulate that publicly. And so, yes, it has gone around. And because you are on the board, I really would like to get a clear understanding because this is something that I understand was approved by the hospital administrator last month in October to do an above step increase for a marketing position, a hospital marketing and communications position. To begin with, I didn't know the hospital needed to have a marketing position. I mean, it's not like we're in the private sector and we're trying to market, um, you know, our business. I mean, the hospital right now is the only public hospital on Guam, uh, that's owned by our people, aside of course, from our private hospital and of course, our naval hospital that we have up the hill here. But really, what, what steps are you as a board member looking at these type of positions to prioritize? Because when we see stuff like this, I mean, it's like increasing it to $75,000 a year. Um, I'm in the wrong job. I should go apply for this position because wow, I, I think I could handle this very easily. And I think there are other personnel at the hospital very easily handle this without a position like this. And then on top of that, doing an above step recruitment. When we know there are other critical positions at the hospital that are direly needed, I do recommend, Madam Speaker, at the appropriate time, that we actually look at what the hiring practices are at the hospital. Because it's very hard to sell the idea that these are critical needs when we see examples like this that come out and they go out in the community and people see it. And then they look at it. It's really, how do you sell that issue when we see this type of stuff going on? And while I realize you relayed your focus and I, I appreciate that's definitely on the infrastructure of the current hospital and how can you maintain the facility, keep it operating? But as a board member, obviously these policy issues come before you. And I just really wanted to get a clear idea. Uh, were you made aware of this at the time? Did you concur on it as a board to authorize uh, this above step recruitment for communications and marketing position? And is this a priority for the hospital?
Uh, okay. The, the specifics of like steps and that kind of, uh, I, I've never heard us discussing that at a, at a board meeting. But I will say again, that I was an advocate from the time that I started, again, six years ago, where the hospital was constantly under, uh, again, playing on, on defense. The media put something out and our administrator, administrative team would spend their time crafting a response and getting that pushed back out to the public. And so I would say that, you know, kind of marketing and public, if, if this is what we're talking about specifically, that those, those, those kinds of jobs have evolved and, uh, other, other ways that I feel that marketing contributes to the overall health of the hospital is through, uh, employee, I mean, we, nowadays it's called E M P S. N P S is kind of like the net promoter score of like, you know, you score, you, you go somewhere, oh, would you rate this place on a scale from one to 10 kind of a thing? Well, now we're more focused on, uh, or just as much the internal employee's experience. And, uh, we've done, had to do a lot. I, I think it, it's difficult to measure. I mean, one of the, I mean, in my own role as a customer experience person, it's very difficult. For example, uh, Senator Ada, how do you measure the love that you have for your wife? Is it, uh, you know, it, it's, it's difficult to put a dollar figure on what that love is. And so I would argue also that it's difficult to put that to help and understand how engaged an employee is. And then if that employee is engaged, how do you measure that productivity? That is going towards the job that they're doing. I'm not sure if I'm explaining that as well as I probably could, but what I'm trying to say in particular, if we're talking about this PIO position, I, well, in the last administration, uh, I was always advocating for us having this person. I don't like the idea of the administrative team stopping what they're doing and going off and trying to put, you know, uh, information for the public together. I'm talking about newsletters, you know, town hall meetings, uh, these kinds of things that, and so I would, I would argue that a PIO is a critical position for any highly public, especially in COVID. I feel like it's a blessing that we had a public information officer that's able to put out information for employees, put out information for the public and, uh, just, I would say in general, increase the, uh, good feeling that you have when you go to work, you know, nobody wants to go to work at a place that is constantly being questioned and pounded down all the time. Like you're not smart enough, you're not good enough, the roof is leaking, the elevator doesn't work, you know, the Z wing needs to be demolished, our HVAC system is broken, you know, the cafeteria is old, the, there's towels on the floor kind of a thing. And so Senator Brown, I would say that, you know, to the public that, uh, again, in my role at the hospital, that I have been an advocate 100% prior to this administration, to the hospital having a PIO on staff. And for that person to be on staff, they should, that we should think about it as a critical position that helps the community understand what is, uh, what is critical at the hospital? What, you know, what information, you, you, I mean, the, the website's updated. I'm not sure if you've ever seen the website before. Uh, but if I was needing to take my mother to the hospital, I would probably go to the website before I headed on over to admit her.
You know, I bring this up because I, I, I mean, I understand your position of what you're relaying. I don't necessarily agree with it. Uh, I think there are a number of other, if we're looking at the, at the staffing pattern for GMH, uh, there's a lot of other administrative positions that exist that can very easily assist and absorb that responsibility. And I don't agree with you with regards to the leadership. I, I do have to put this out because I think when, when you're talking about all these other critical needs and you're not only hiring this position, you're having to do it above step. There's no other, other individuals out there that can do this job that are available, that doesn't require an above step, uh, position. I bring this up because I've never had a spokesperson. And I've run several critical agencies in this government. I've never prioritized it because I felt it's unnecessary. If you're the head of running an agency, you should have ability and capability of knowing the information of what's going on in your operations. And you have a lot of other, and please, I think when we look at the hospital breakdown, uh, there's a lot of other positions in, in the administration that can assist in facilitating getting this information to the head of the hospital to articulate that. Uh, and so, you know, it's a different perspective. I understand what you're saying in terms of awareness, but the need to market or to survey employees, I think you're going to have employees that have been working there a number of years, probably didn't get an above step. And are performing critical work are probably upset. That's how this information gets out to us publicly. Fortunately now with the Bill Senator Telo introduced, I think we'll get it on a monthly basis. All the public will have it and be aware of it rather than employees, because it's more, more how it gets out. You have disgruntled employees who continue to see these type of practices happening in the government. Uh, and you, you know, you're in the board and you're wanting to relay the need of critical support for the hospital as we all want to see. But when we look at stuff like this, it kind of raises your eyebrows. So why is this necessary? And you, you mean, you don't have any other applicants that could have filled this position and done this job without an above step recruitment? That these are not skillsets other people also possess?
Uh, it, it's, it's interesting that you mentioned that because I asked the same question. And, uh, sure, there are folks, I mean, we could argue that you could take an admin person and they could learn how to do some, you know, I don't know, uh, how to update website information or write a press release. Uh, but I, I, I disagree with you. I feel like that, uh, this is a public information. It, it's critical that you hire the right person that understands distribution, that, you know, so many different things. And so, yes, we could have, uh, given these tasks to other folks that were already seated. Uh, but I, I feel like it would have been a disjointed message and I, I don't feel like that properly represents this community uh, and of Guam. I, I.
Well, and even, I, I just wanted to check, but even if you had to hire, you need to do someone above step to get this position? There's really not other applicants out in the community that have this skillset that could have applied that didn't necessarily require, but I mean, they're making $75,000 a year. If I can do this running an agency with all the responsibilities, uh, GMH needs to do and understand from the outside, this just how this looks and how it appears. Because I'm sure if we take a fine, you know, sharpened pencil and go through the hiring at GMH, I mean, because this may be just be the top. Let's look at what else has been hired there that doesn't directly provide, uh, you know, support for patients. I'm sure it'll be an interesting ride, but I don't doubt we'll probably end up doing that because we do see this type of stuff. But no, there's a disgruntlement about this because it does exist. And is it necessary? Probably not. You probably could get a, a person to do your PIO work for far less than $75,000 a year. Be mindful and certainly to the administrative GMH, be mindful that when these type of things come to surface, it discredits the argument. Because you can argue, I need to have someone to do this. But do you need to do an above step recruitment as if this is so critical that these skillsets don't exist in our community? And only one or two individuals perhaps are eligible, uh, that we still need them at this rate. So I, I just want to put that out because I don't entirely agree, uh, with how you're, you're viewing this. Yes, maybe you think it's important, but is it necessary at this level? To me, that's not the biggest priority at GMH. One of the things Senator Ada had asked with regards to the location of the new hospital. And I understand certainly your focus is with regards to the current infrastructure and keeping the current hospital as operational as possible. Having seen it myself, I understand some of the major challenges there. But because you are going to continue to sit on the board, uh, if you're confirmed by the legislature, what are your positions with regards? Because this is going to be, continue to be highly controversial about the location of the new hospital. If, if it does move forward to be located on Eagles Field, obviously you're going to have concerns of original landowners in the view that government and the governor is sidestepping that process uh, by supposedly leasing this property from the military. So it's going to be very controversial. And we're talking about a significant investment of public resources that will go into the construction of the hospital, probably close to a billion dollars or more on property that's not owned by the people of Guam. And so I wanted to get your feedback. Is that something you're, you're looking into or will look into as a board member? Obviously it's going to be on your table, uh, because I really want to know what's motivating, what's driving this? Is it being driven by the board at GMH? Uh, because I really want to know what's motivating, what's driving this? Is it being driven by the board at G M H or is it being driven by the administration? In terms of where the location will be for the new hospital. Because it's putting it there is the infrastructure cost. You know, the upgrades of infrastructure, they're going to be needed to, um, construct that facility. How much more is it going to cost to locate it in Mangilo versus locating it at Oka Point, for example? If you go back and locate it there and lease from the Tomorrowland Trust, for example. I mean, are those things that you have looked into or will be looking into as a board member? Cause I think that issue is going to get even more controversial as time goes on, just by virtue of the history and what's involved, particularly. Uh, with the property at Eagles Field or any property that was owned by original landowners that is held by the military, obviously is going to draw such controversy. So I want to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, uh, Senator, again, I'll, I'll just say that I haven't been briefed on, uh. At really anything in any of the details of the new hospital. Quite frankly, I didn't even know that it was a controversial issue on the location. And I'll just say that again, that I don't really have an opinion on the location of the hospital just yet. Uh, I hope to the next time I see you, but, uh, I don't really have an opinion. I, I feel that the community would be best served moving out of Tumon. Tumon's already just congested. I, I mean, goodness, when I go in for my board meetings, I, I. Uh, I'm driving around for 20 minutes looking for a parking stall and we have limited people going to the hospital now. And so, uh, I hope that there's no controversy, less controversy over the location. And more about what, how we're going to serve the people of Guam at the new hospital.
Well, I wish you well if you're confirmed by the legislature, because I, I just think that issue is going to land on the lap of the board members. And I'm a little concerned that, that the, you know, that you as a board member, not you personally, I assume maybe other board members, I don't know to have, to what degree they're briefed. But, uh, I just think if, if the board itself is a policymaking board of G M H is really driving this agenda. Of where to locate and the construction of a new facility. Uh, that, you know, you guys have a clear position of, of what it is you, you are planning or directing of the board to, of the rest of the G M H and your fellow board members to move forward for. Because unfortunately, as I mentioned, just by virtue of what's being proposed, uh, I don't think it's going to settle well with a lot of people. Uh, to, to have property that we don't even possess or own. Uh, especially when, when the government of Guam does have other resources available to, directly versus leasing property. And if the, if, if the military does not need the land and they're, they're willing to lease it back to Gov Guam. Even if it's for a nominal amount, then you know, we would assume that's excess land that they're not, uh, not needing. So I just think as a board member, I hope you're mindful of that moving forward, because I'd hate to make a close to billion dollar investment. On property that's not ours, when, you know, we do have land assets that can be looked at and prioritized over that. So it's not something that, that continues to become an, an issue of controversy and original landowners who. Who feel they have an ownership of that property are totally disenfranchised by this process. So with that, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Davis. Good luck with your continued, I appreciate the fact that you've served these many years and you're wanting to continue. Because I also know that because of all the issues at G M H, it's, it's not the, you know, the luxurious board to be sitting on. You have a lot of challenges to deal with. The fact you're willing to, to, uh, be reappointed and want to continue to serve is appreciated. I, I just bring these concerns up because in your capacity, uh, as a board member, you're able to make those policy calls and something to be mindful of, particularly with regard to hiring. Above step hiring and, and the location of the new Guam Memorial Hospital. With that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Tai Tui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, you know, I just wanted to continue leading off from what Senator Brown said, you know, this, definitely this position on the board. Is a very difficult one, uh, other than the parole board being one that I've always, you know, in awe of anybody who wants to serve in that capacity. The hospital is our lifeline in this island. It's a lifeline. And, uh, it's a very important position. But Hafaday Sharon, and thank you for continuing, wanting to continue to serve. But, you know, I, I have to admit, you know, a lot of the questions that we asked, you had to, you didn't have the information. Uh, you were aware of it. Um, you didn't have, uh, the ability to give us some update data, other than that they're reconstructing. Um, the Z wing, uh, is that right? The Z wing, um, and it's.
Demolishing.
Demolishing, yeah. And, and it's very frustrating for us because, you know, we'd like to see an individual who's going to be sitting on the board to have. Especially someone who's been there for already six years, six years. That's quite a long time. To not information in front of you to answer some of these questions.
And I think, I, I think one of the things, sorry, I, I don't mean to interrupt Senator, uh, and I, I fully understand.
Allow me to, Sharon. And then if you could just write down these questions that I have, just allow me to finish. Uh, but you know, you, you have the opportunity, uh, for the last six years to be able, I think I've seen you at the task force, the healthcare, uh, task force meeting. Uh, regarding the hospital. I think I saw you once there, if I'm not mistaken, if not, then it might've been another board member. But, um, you know, this kind of information, and especially when it comes to the hiring, this is the opportunity for the board members to really know. Who is getting paid what? I'm not going to linger too much on it because I think, you know, the other senators asked you about this information. But to know this information, sitting at a, at a, um. Your confirmation hearing is so important. It makes me want to ask you the question and please feel free, you know, to answer the ones that I said earlier, but makes me want to ask you. Then why do you want to sit on this board and can you continue to be on this board?
That's a great question. Uh, first I would just say that there's so many different things, uh. On facilities, capital improvement and I T. That if there were specific questions that folks wanted to get answered, then. As a, especially coming to the legislative hearing, like send us a list of the things that are on your mind. And that way we could properly prepare for a hearing like this. I don't sit on the H R committee and so, uh, on that subcommittee, again, I sit on. Facilities, I T and capital improvements. And just maybe to explain to the public, we have two meetings a month. The first meeting being the full board meeting where all of the information is completed by the executive team. They, you know, get all those details ready and we're, uh, there for whatever it is, two hours, three hours. And then the separate, I mean, it has taken me six years to get fully, I wouldn't even say fully trained. On how the government law works. And so, uh, uh. Again, if you wanted to know specific things about specific projects to give us advance notice before a meeting. And then I could have prepared, uh, you know, a PowerPoint presentation. Again, Senator, that's what I would do in my own job. Uh, I, I didn't know that at a confirmation hearing where we're going to be going over particulars of different things that involve the hospital. Uh, that I, I feel like the executive team would be better suited, you know, if William was here or, uh, you know, other members of that team. That they would be better suited to answer those questions more specifically for you.
Hey Sharon, let me ask you this one question then. When you're at the board, do you vote on other subject matters other than infrastructure?
Well, yeah, obviously, yes, yes.
It's just like the legislature, you know, I don't know, I don't put out all the bills, you know, my bills, I'm, I'm very well versed on, but I make it a point that. Any other senator that puts out a bill, the subject matter, I have to be really, you know, acclimate myself with the subject matter and do my own.
Yeah, yeah.
Really understand what's going on because my vote is a precious vote and Sharon, your vote, especially as a member of the public. Is a very, very precious vote and really accolade yourself with every topic matter that you sit on this board for. Whether it's hiring, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's a, a building of a new hospital. Um, it, it's so important to know these areas and that's, I, I guess that's what we expect as a legislature. I mean, if we had to on, it's not just you Sharon, but you know, moving forward on anybody's confirmation, moving forward. I asked that the committee chair people, uh, person, if the nominee doesn't have all that information or is not familiar with it. That we come back and have another, uh, confirmation hearing to provide more, you know, what we're looking for is, is trust. Integrity, credibility. This is what we need in our board members because you represent us, especially you Sharon, because you're representing the people. You're not a member of the medical community, you're not a member of the nurses association. You represent the people of Guam. You're our designee. And it's so important, you know, in the last thing, because I know we have another, uh, it's 10 o'clock and we have another, um, public hearing, uh, coming up, oversight hearing. Have you ever, um, been in a situation where there's been a gag order on the hospital? I mean, you're a person that's been in communications, G T A, of course you work for G T A, but you also worked for P D N at the point. And the importance of media is, and, and of course you even advocated for a P I O to, to be put in place. Have you ever, um, heard of a gag order for the administrator? Or even a P I O not going on, uh, to a, a media outlet to provide information? And would you can, you know, support something like that, a gag order?
I've never heard the word gag order in my time at the hospital.
Have you ever heard that anybody was told not to speak to a particular media outlet and come on and provide information? Have you heard that?
No.
Okay, well, I'm hearing that Sharon, and I hope that you can, uh, look into that as, so there's a couple of projects. On your hand right now, because it's obvious you want to, you want to continue working at, uh, or not, yeah, working for the people of Guam and sitting in this capacity. So I asked Sharon that you please look into the, um, the hospital location. Look into hiring of this individual, you know, being hired at this amount. Um, and most especially look at, at how the hospital is not providing information for certain media outlet. If they've been told not to go on to a certain media outlet and speak on what's happening at the hospital. Um, I think that's very important. The people of Guam need to have, and as a person that used to work for P D N, you know, the importance of reaching to our community. And you said it yourself, that, uh, you know, having a representative, uh, to speak on behalf of the hospital and bring the good news. Well, it's important to bring the news to all media outlets and not, you know, gag order one particular outlet. So I hope you look into these concerns that the, you know, my colleagues and I have, uh, regarding, uh, the hospital. And I, if there's anything else I can do to sit down with you to, to discuss other areas of concern. Then I ask that you please, my door is always open, um, and, and to remember that you, you represent the people of Guam. You know, you're put in that place to represent us. So I, I, I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Okay, and good luck. And, um, I'm hoping those, our committee chair reaches out to you too as well. Um, providing more information that can help you and, and, you know. Making sure that we got that integrity and credibility and trust in our hospital. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Tai Tui. Ms. Davis, um, we're coming to the end, but I'd like to ask you another question and that is, uh, are you satisfied that the board, uh, that you are. Uh, able with the knowledge that you have provided or the information that you're provided to adequately. You know, govern the, um, hospitals' response to C M S, uh, issues. And that you are fully briefed on C M S issues and that the board is able to adequately address complaints regarding. Um, personnel or, or procedures at the hospital.
I, I do, I do. And I'll give you just a real recent example. Uh, the hospital was cited for some C M S violations up at the, uh, the S and U, at the skilled nursing facility. And we received a full report from our C M S compliance regulatory person that was emailed. Well in advance with enough time for board members to read through, uh, super thorough. Uh, Danielle does a really great job for the hospital. Uh, and then we took a tour, uh, of the facility on Friday to look at, you know, uh. Well, to look at the facility and what, uh, talk to the folks that are actually operating that facility about what we're doing to constantly improve. Uh, uh, you know, again, I will just say that it, it's painful that we, you know, we, maybe folks tend to think that we wait for a C M S report to come out. To fix things at a hospital. Uh, I assure you that that's, that there are fine folks working for this community at the hospital. That are doing that on a daily basis. And, you know, the way that C M S works is they just drop. Uh, drop in and, you know, start their procedures, uh, you know, and it, and it serves a, a purpose. But, I mean, that's, it's, it's a tough situation to be in. I, I do feel like we have, uh, in fact, I feel like the information that I get today is better than the information I got six years ago. I feel like it's way more thorough, we're much more transparent, you know, as I said earlier, and, you know, uh. I feel as though Tello is thinking that I don't have all the information that, that she needs, but, uh, the information is available that. We have had to build a system so that we could put all of the capital improvement projects into one format. We were doing that with paper previously and now it's got way more eyes on it. And I feel like we're way more transparent, much more communication is going on. And again, unfortunately, a lot of that had to do with, with COVID, just shining a light on some of the things that. We need to improve on at the hospital.
Thank you. Yeah. So C M S has also, um, highlighted some of, some not just facility issues or, you know, E H R issues, but also. Um, personnel issues or, or even medical issues. And just want to, you, I just want to know as a board member, so you don't serve on every committee. But do you feel as a board member that you are adequately prepared to, to ensure that we are addressing those issues? Or that the, the way that the hospital has chosen to address those issues and report back to C M S? Um, that those are, are as good as we can do, you know, or, or can we do better?
I, I, I see the question. I asked that question to my own teams is, is this really the best we can do? And, uh, I, I say, yes, this is the best we can do right now for this situation that we're in.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again for, uh, taking all our questions and giving us your, your honest answers. And, uh, thank you again, uh, Ms. Passadas, for you being here and your testimony and support. But, um, really, Ms. Davis, thank you for your willingness to commit to this, uh, this fiduciary duty. It's a fiduciary duty. So there are some very serious, uh, responsibilities and consequences. And of course, you know, we're talking about our only hospital, our public hospital, so we are, we all are stakeholders. And, uh, you, you answer to the entire people of Guam. So, and you are the public member. So it's a very, you know, pronounced obligation that you have. And so I want to thank you for your willingness to serve and, and to do your best at that role. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony, the committee will consider the reappointment of Sharon Jo Davis to the G M H A Board of Trustees duly heard public hearing. For this reappointment is now adjourned and the time is 10:08 A M. Sido Massey, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.